Good evening and welcome to our San Bruno City Council and Redevelopment Agency Meeting of September 13th, 2011. I'd like to thank the Garden Club for the flowers they always provide for our meetings. Roll call, please.
Council Board Member O'Connell.
Here.
Council Board Member Medina.
Here.
Council Board Member Ibera.
Here.
Vice Chair. Vice Chair, Vice Mayor Salazar.
Here.
Chair, Mayor Ruane.
Here. And we do have a special guest this evening who's going to give a report. That's San Francisco Sheriff Michael Hennessy, and I'd like you to lead us in the pledge, please.
(inaudible)
Thank you. We do have one announcement, and it's not on the agenda, but we just received word a few days ago that the Police Department and Fire Department received a very special award this week, and I'd like Fire Chief Dennis Agg to tell us about the award and its rarity.
Honorable Mayor and Council, on September 7th, we received this First Responder Award from the Hazardous Materials Group Committee from the State of California to continue and challenge the event in Sacramento. This is an award that is not given every year. The last award was given in 2008 for the Norfolk, Virginia propane explosion. So, it's quite an honor, and I'd like to thank Matt Krimsky from the San Francisco Police Department for the nomination.
Thank you very much, and congratulations.[122.14][122.14](applause) Our item number four is Presentations. We're going to receive a report from the San Francisco Sheriff's Office regarding the status of the proposed demolition of the former San Bruno jail site.
Good evening, Council. Very happy to be here to talk about this project. As you know, San Francisco built a new county jail on the property that we own just off of Sneeath Lane, and we have not yet torn down the old building, the building that was built in 1934. We now have funding to do that project. And Kevin, do we have a handout for the council members? We handed that out? Okay. All right, thank you. We have a handout that kind of gives you the basics of it, but essentially, the project is now in the bid process with the bids to be returned on September 21st. So shortly after September 21st, we'll have a more defined path, but the path as we have it planned out at this point is that the destruction of the old building will take place in two phases. The first phase will be hazardous material abatement, because in the old building built in 1934, building materials in those days contained asbestos in flooring and other parts. And there's also boilers in the -- unused boilers in the basement of the building which were wrapped in asbestos. So there'll be a hazardous material abatement period which will take place probably starting February or March, and it'll take approximately three months. And after that has been accomplished, then the destruction of the building will actually take place. It will be approximately a four-month process. So hopefully by July of next year, the building will be properly taken down and removed. Most of it will be recycled, and the hazardous material obviously will be encased and disposed in an appropriate way. After that, we will then proceed to what we call Phase Two, and we are going to rebuild the front entrance to the building, the gate, front gate area. We just have a chain link system set up there, and we have a proposal to put a property, a proper security station there, a public toilet for visitors who come and have to wait for visiting, and to have a proper gate procedure. And that will take place in May through December of 2012, and we hope that the entire project will be over with by December of 2012. The old building really has no use. It hasn't been used for -- since we've opened the new one. It does still present somewhat of an earthquake risk being of construction from 1934 standards, and it's really important for us to get that building out of there before anything bad happens.
Great, thank you. I know you did such a good job when you built the new jail, keeping the residents informed. I'm assuming that will still continue about hall routes and different things like that?
Yes, we will have one or more public meetings, and we will notify residents through a process of mail with a list that will be provided with -- from your staff. We'll get the list from the San Bruno clerk, I believe, is who will provide us with the list. I'm not sure exactly who provides it with, but we'll mail to everybody that wants to be mailed to and provide appropriate notices. There'll be a public meeting, and we will also make sure that people can call and answer questions as it goes along, either through the contractor or through the Department of Public Works, who is actually formally managing the construction contract. And obviously, they can call the San Francisco Sheriff's Department. We'll be glad to either answer their questions or direct them to someone if it's a more technical question.
Great.
Through the chair, just to add on to that, so the phone numbers that will be listed for the community to contact, they'll get a live person? Is this going to be something that's only eight to five? You get a recording, and they have to call back, or how -- so what's the level of expectations that the residents will have as far as being able to get ahold of somebody?
I believe it will be Monday through Friday business hours. However, they can contact the Sheriff's Department at any time, and we will root them or get them called back first thing in the morning when someone who is involved in the construction process will be available. Construction will take place only Monday through Friday, and it'll take place during traditional business hours, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And so if people have questions, that's the time they should be calling.
Thank you.
I'm being corrected that workers will arrive at the site at 7:00 AM.
So you just made their day longer.
Yeah, made their day a little longer, right.
Good. Any other questions of the sheriff? Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, and I just want to say it's been a pleasure working with various people in the city of San Bruno, from Frank Headley, when he was Chief of Police, to City Manager, to many other people here. And I know it's not always the most comfortable thing to have county jail in your neighborhood, particularly somebody else's county jail, but we've always tried to have a good, open relationship with the public officials here in San Bruno, and I can assure you that that will continue.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Irene?
I have a question. Thank you. Are the details of this, or will they be on a website, a San Francisco website? Or what I'm getting at is if there could be a link from our city website to the details of this put up in May so that people who don't know
Yes.
what's going on can link that way?
Yeah, we can make that happen.
Okay.
First of all, we can make that happen, and secondly, obviously, this is a public construction project, and all documents are public information. We'll be glad to make those available to people as they request them.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Lubke.
My name is Alan Lubke. I live on Fleetwood Drive. I've always wanted to meet Sheriff Hennessy.[510.03][510.03](laughter) As the ambassador from Fleetwood Drive to the City Council, and as the ambassador from Southern Minnesota to Northern California, I particularly wanted to meet you, Sheriff Hennessy. I believe you are in Minnesota.
I live in college in Minnesota.
College in Minnesota. I want to thank you so much for your concentration in this plan for the deputy station, public toilet, and waiting area, new fence and gates. That is a long-needed thing. I have picked up people, for example, I picked up a lady not too long ago at the Bart Station. She seemed to be lost. Where are you going? She said, "I'm going to the jail. I'd be happy to take you there." And she was not greeted warmly at all, and didn't know where to go from there. There was no advice to her as far as transportation is concerned. We wound up taking her away, and I want to commend you for that improvement. Thank you.
Thank you. Nothing else for the sheriff. We'll go on to item number five, review of the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mike. Thanks. Okay, and no changes to the agenda this evening. Approval of the minutes of the City Council Meeting of August 9th, 2011, and Special City Council Meeting of August 24th, 2011. Any errors, changes?
Through the chair.
Ken?
A minor typo or correction on, I believe it was the meeting of August 9th, on Item C for the funding agreement of the archway. There's many references of JPA, JPG, and so I'd like it to be corrected to JPB.
Okay.
That's it.
Any other changes? Mr. Lubke, did you have something on the minutes?
Not on the minutes.
Okay. Then we'll approve the minutes with the changes as requested. All right. Consent calendar. All items are considered routine or implemented earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested by a council member, citizen, or staff.
I'd like to pull 7D, please.
7D. Okay.
Alan Lubke, Fleetwood Drive, Item F.
All right. Anything else? Motion to approve the remainder of the
Move to approve the remainder of the consent calendar?
Second.
Motion second on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Item 7D, accept a resignation letter from youth representative in the Parks and Recs Commission, declare a board member vacancy, and direct the city clerk to initiate the process for appointment of a new member. Irene?
I just want to pull that out to first thank Sarah Bauer for her service and to kind of publicize the fact that we do need a new youth representative. So people who are in high school, junior and sport -- is it and senior, or just they have to be a junior, Randy? Juniors?
They don't have to be.
They're be recommended.
Okay. Who are interested in service and representing their age levels and the kids who would like to serve on the Recreation Department Commission.[747.66][747.66](laugh) La la la. Commission, contact the city.
Through the chair, is there -- would it be appropriate for some supplemental information, say, to the high schools?
Do we reach out to the schools, Carol?
We posted a cappuccino.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
We have an applicant, one or two, I believe, already.
Oh, great.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you, that's all I wanted to do.
All right, Item 7F, adopt a resolution authorizing staff to apply for $30,000 of grant funds to develop a multipurpose classroom and computer lab. Mr. Lubke, you pulled that item?
I have a question as to
Yeah, go ahead.
I wanted that pulled, too. Just, Alan Lubke, Fleetwood Drive, I just have a question as to where would this multipurpose classroom and computer lab be?
Okay.
Please.
The City Council recently approved a project to add a wheelchair lift to the basement of the library, and that will make the basement area an accessible place where we can have other activities. This will help to add some equipment, table chairs, audiovisual equipment, computers to the basement, and then we can have educational classes in there. We are planning on having like a photography class, things like that, for adults, as well as having computer classes or homework sessions after school for the students. So it will be in the basement of the library.
Good, thank you.
Through the chair.
Ken?
I, too, wanted to pull this item, but not for a question, but just to highlight, just to thank staff for their application for this grant, because if they did not, then this money wouldn't have been available to, you know, this $30,000 wouldn't have been available for this equipment. So thanks staff for pitching in on the idea of -- thank you.
Thank you. Action on Item F.
Through the chair, actually, since the item was pulled and we're asking questions or we have an opportunity to. Randy, I'm curious, if we were to get the grant, how much additional funding, if any, would be required to build out that area as a learning center? Do we need to run extra cables? Do any other kind of modifications to get that in place?
This will cover 100% of the costs of the improvements that we're going to do. If there was ever a plan to do something else larger and grander, which we do not have any plans at this time, then we may have to look at other things. But this will make it a very acceptable classroom, and it's the piece that's a little bit missing from the recreation center when the recreation division's offering certain classes where you need kind of a quiet space. All the classes are underneath the gymnasium, and you're there and you're having a basketball game or volleyball game essentially over your head. It's hard to concentrate on some of these things. This will give us a nice, quiet space where we can hold classes during library hours so we don't have to put on additional staff anyway. At this time, there's no additional funds that are needed or in the foreseeable future.
Excellent, thank you.
Move to approve. There are no other questions from the council. Consent items D and F.
Second.
Okay, motion second to approve. Question? All in favor?
Aye.[966.16][966.16](applause)
Okay. Item number eight, public hearings. Notices have been published, posted, and mailed, and waive the second reading, hold the public hearing, and adopt an ordinance adding Chapter 6.58 to the San Bruno Municipal Code prohibiting medical marijuana distribution facilities.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This item is a public hearing to hear testimony regarding the proposed ordinance to prohibit medical marijuana distribution facilities in the city. As you may recall, the council has held a total of four meetings over the past two years on the subject of medical marijuana. In 2009, the council met twice. They considered and adopted a moratorium so staff could study the evolving federal and state law on the topic, and also to research the potential effects of these facilities on the surrounding neighborhoods as well as police resources. The moratorium expires on the 25th of this month. This July, the council met again to hear from staff about the current state of the law, and also heard from the Chief of Police, who documented the secondary effects of medical marijuana distribution facilities. As a result of that meeting, the council directed staff to prepare an ordinance prohibiting such facilities, and you introduced that ordinance at the August 9th meeting. There's been one legal development since that time. The state legislature actually passed a bill that explicitly authorizes cities to regulate medical marijuana distribution facilities. However, it's actually not clear whether that law changes anything. We think local agencies already have that power based on existing case law, and we also think, as do a lot of other city attorneys, that cities are not required to allow those facilities if they so choose. Nevertheless, we'll continue to monitor these developments, and we'll report back if we think you should take additional or different action. For now, we recommend opening the public hearing, taking any testimony, and then adopting the ordinance prohibiting medical marijuana distribution facilities. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mark before we open the public hearing? All right, we're going to open up a public hearing at this time, would anyone in the public like to speak to us on this agenda item?
My name is Alan Lubke. I live on Fleetwood Drive. I haven't read this ordinance. I'd like to see all ordinances be read and not waive their reading because the public, otherwise, how does a public know, especially those people who don't have a computer? How do they know what the ordinance says? Well, they have to go to the clerk's office and get a copy. Have to go to the library. Well, what about those people who are handicapped and bedridden? I believe they're being denied when it comes to the reading and the discussion. We're holding now a public hearing on it. I believe that the -- every ordinance should be read. You can go ahead and waive your second reading if you will. I don't know how many more readings there are going to be, but I hope that the next one, you don't waive the reading, that you read it if it's for the final vote. Now, if this ordinance, if the purpose of this ordinance is not in our backyard, if that's the main purpose, I certainly hope that the ordinance says that, is clear about that. It's not in our backyard, you know, it's somebody else's. Let's be clear about it, that we don't want it here in San Bruno. Put it somewhere else. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I just did want to point out that the summary of the ordinance was published as required in a local newspaper of general circulation. I certainly appreciate Mr. Lubke's comments about the reading of the ordinance. Of course, that's a policy decision for the City Council, but I think it's been the council's policy over the years to waive that reading, understanding that the summary that's published in the newspaper is sufficient at least to give people some notice of what it's about, and they can certainly inquire further.
City Manager?
In addition, as Mr. Lubke indicates, the ordinance is published in its entirety as part of the agenda packet on the city's website, and for those persons who are not -- who do not have access or for whatever reason do not use the Internet, a call to the city clerk's office, a request can be made for the paper -- for a paper copy of any ordinance that is in front of the city council to be mailed to them.
Good, thank you.
In addition to the paper copies being available in the library, of course.
There you go.
Real quick, to our city clerk, did you receive any calls by chance regarding this ordinance? None. Okay, thank you.
All right, anyone else in the public like to speak to us on this agenda item? All right, if you close the public hearing, you're going to be precluded from speaking to us again, so action.
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion second to close the public hearing. On the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Action. First action is to waive the second
Through the chair. If there's no discussion, I move to waive the second hearing.
Waive the reading.
Waive.
Motion second to waive the second reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Through the chair, I'd like to introduce the ordinance for adoption.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Item number nine is public comment for items not on the agenda. It is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and interaction where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendaized pursuant to state law. Would anyone like to address the council under public comment?
My name is Alan Lubke, and I live on Fleetwood Drive. I was going to reserve my comments for the discussion of the matter of the reduction of the police budget, but since I can deliver my comments at this time and then go home and rest, I'll do it now. Honorable Mayor, council members, my fellow citizens of San Bruno, my name is Alan Lubke. I live with my wife Ursula on Fleetwood Drive. The solution to the budget problem regarding the police department is to immediately apply the Lubke Rule of Ineptness to the police department. Again, apply the Lubke Rule of Ineptness to the police department. Recently, traffic mitigation fixes were done to Fleetwood Drive to attempt to slow the traffic to the posted speed limit of 25 miles per hour. Firstly, 25 mile-per-hour speed limit signs were posted at critical positions, particularly just before the steep hill, where there had been a death due to the drop-off and the telephone pole that happened to be in the way of the motorcyclist who was attempting to avoid the sudden appearance of a car backing from a driveway. Secondly, 25 mile-per-hour speed limit paint signs were stenciled to the middle of each lane of traffic at critical positions. Thirdly, lines on each side of the street were painted to designate the parking boundaries for parked vehicles. These lines, as you can see in this virtual slide, are continuous along the length of Fleetwood Drive. None of these improvements have seemed to reduce the speed of traffic. More cars seem to go faster now than they did before, and of course, darkness was not taken into consideration for any of the applied methods. The painting of the continuous borders on either side of the street took more than three weeks to accomplish. The contractor blocked off areas as much as possible so that their automated equipment could be used to paint the stripes. Remember, these are continuous stripes. When there were still cars parked on the street, the contractor coned off as much of the area as possible, and bit by bit, the residents got the hint that they were keeping the painting from being done and parked their cars elsewhere. Manual striping ensued car length by car length. Now, when the painting began, some concerned citizens, like myself, immediately parked their cars either in their driveway or on a nearby street that wasn't, obviously, part of Fleetwood Drive. Now, the police department took advantage of this parking on nearby streets to issue tickets to some of those citizens, like myself, for parking more than 72 hours while not in front of their residents. This, my honorable mayor, members of the city council, my fellow citizens, is a definition of ineptness, ineptness, to put it mildly, on the part of the police department. Now, to apply their Lubke Rule of Ineptness to remind the department how some of its members have reflected badly on all of the department, and to solve the police department budget problem, the following is recommended. Place each department member's name in a hat and draw the names out one by one. Each tenth name then is given the opportunity to be relieved from duty or to retire. This is the same rule that the Roman Army applied to instill discipline within their ranks, and the rule that National Football League applies to its teams by penalizing the entire team for violation of the rules by one individual. In summary, application of the Lubke Rule of Ineptness at this time will solve two problems, one being the instilling of discipline in the police department, and two, reducing the department budget in a nondiscriminatory, albeit very painful, manner. This concludes my presentation. Are there any comments, questions, or accolades?
It's this public comment. We're not allowed to comment. Thank you very much. Item number 10, Conduct of Business. A, adopt an enforceable obligation payment schedule for the San Bruno Redevelopment Agency.
Through the chair. With this item being brought forward as in past, I will have to recuse myself since I do reside within the redevelopment area. The same holds for me.
Good evening, Honorable Chair, members of the board. Edmondson Finance Director. On June 29th of this year, the governor signed into law AB 26 and AB 27. AB 26 is otherwise known as the Elimination Bill, eliminates redevelopment agencies effective October 1st, 2011. AB 27, otherwise known as the Opt-In Bill, provides an opportunity for redevelopment agencies to opt back in and continue its operations. The City Council did adopt an urgency ordinance on August 9th to opt in and so to permit the San Bruno redevelopment agencies to continue its existence and operations. Shortly after AB 26 and 27 were signed into law, suit was filed with the California Supreme Court, asking this court to stay and suspend the implementation of AB 26 and 27. The Supreme Court did issue a stay on all the provisions of AB 27 and most of the provisions of 26. However, among the provisions that weren't stayed for AB 26 was the requirement that the agency board adopt something called an Enforcement Obligation Payment Schedule prior to August 28th, 2011. This schedule basically then allows agencies to continue making its payments of its obligations subsequent to that date. Since members of the redevelopment agency members were not available for a special meeting prior to the August 28th deadline, the executive director proceeded to approve the enforceable obligation payment schedule on August 26th, and we are now coming back to the And we, we are now coming back to the board for formal approval of it. It's important to note that, as indicated on page 26 of the staff report or on your agenda packet, it's actually the schedule of the enforceable obligation payment schedule. And you'll note that a substantial part of the agency payment is to schools and other taxing entities that are obligations of the agency and together that totals $3.3 million. The, the list is actually very comprehensive and includes everything that is budgeted and that is known by staff as of today. So with that, I'll take any questions on, on the adoption of the enforceable obligation payment schedule.
Any questions of the finance director? Okay.
Just simply stated, it's because of the lawsuit that this has to be implemented so that we pay certain, certain jurisdictions.
That is correct. The, the element, the provision of AB 26 did not state this particular requirement and therefore the obligation to, to have this formally adopted.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or action?
I'll introduce the resolution. Boardmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Boardmember Ibera?
Aye.
Chair Rueng?
Aye.
Thank you, Ed. Item 10B, we can ask our council members to come back in. Item 10B is to receive a report on the police consolidation study.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. In March of 2010, the city councils of San Bruno and Milbrae authorized a sharing of police chief services and approved the study to evaluate, evaluate the feasibility of consolidating the two police departments. A contract was approved authorizing the Municipal Resources Group, or MRG, to determine any service benefits and cost savings opportunities by sharing police services. Representatives from MRG examined calls for service, crime statistics, staffing levels, and budgeted costs for the cities of Milbrae and San Bruno. After supplying an initial draft and receiving comments from city staff, MRG provided a completed study that provided alternatives for full and partial police consolidation. The first MRG study analysis provided two consolidated consolidation options and several alternatives for partial consolidation. The first consolidation op, option referred to as the existing service model identified the cost savings but failed to provide an adequate staffing level that would serve both communities and it would have been less than what is provided currently today. The second option referred to as the existing budget model provided adequate personnel, however, very little cost savings. Staff worked with MRG consultants to provide an additional option for consolidation that was listed as the preferred service model. This model would provide adequate coverage for police services while recognizing some cost savings. MRG completed the final study that was presented to the city council subcommittees separately and at a joint meeting held later. The presentation focused on the preferred service model and the study identified an estimated savings of about $483,000 in consolidation and that's for a combined total for both cities. Current budget reductions in the city of Milbrae reduced that amount to approximately $300,000 and startup costs for police consolidation were estimated at about $480,000 and this would essentially result in a net increase in expenditure of $180,000 for the first year. The reduction of police personnel over the past 10 years in both San Bruno and Milbrae has been significant and that essentially reduced the amount of savings that we experienced with this study. I think that if that study was done 10 years ago, you would have seen a significant savings. Equally important, when this study first started, is it wasn't all about cost savings. It was about can we enhance police services in both communities? And I think that I know that that's what staff looked at and I know that that message came through in the subcommittee meetings. Because that the preferred service model offered a service level close to what is offered today and it actually, it has one less sworn officer in it than what both agencies currently do today. And it offered very minimal savings, the subcommittee didn't recommend further study. The city of Milbrae has already taken act, taken action on this item and has taken this to their city council because of a, a prompt plan for future policing needs that they require in their city. The two cities will continue to share police chief services for an estimated 30 to 60 days while Milbrae reviews those alternatives. I, I know that this has been a collaborative effort with Milbrae from the very start and similar to FIRE, we do share a great partnership and it's unfortunate that this study didn't prove to, to further show an advantage to consolidation. However, that doesn't take away that we have a very good working relationship with the city of Milbrae. That concludes my comments and I know that Mayor Rueng and council member Medina were very, worked very hard on the subcommittee and they may have some more comments for you.
Any questions of the chief? Mary?
Thank you. So after the 30 or 60 days of sharing, you, you essentially quit with Milbrae?
I will return to resume full-time police chief duties at San Bruno.
Okay. So what will that do to our budget since we share your halftime? I know it says there's $42,000 savings this fiscal year, but next fiscal year, we won't be doing that.
For, for our current fiscal year, when we were planning budgets for this year, we did not budget halftime police chief expenditures. We budgeted for full-time police chief expenditures. So we are actually going to recognize about $42,000 estimated in increase in revenue, but for next year, our budget will remain, or we anticipate it will remain the same.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else, any questions?
Through the chair?
Michael?
I'm curious about the, the numbers in the preferred service model that are outlined here and it shows, it says for the, at least for the current budget year, it was reduced down to $300,000, but had Milbrae, if say next year they were to increase their staffing levels to where they were previously, then that savings would have gone back to the 483?
Correct.
Okay. And you're talking about a one-time save, or one-time cost of $480,000 in the first year?
It was estimated at $480,000, yes.
And so I'm thinking that if you look at this over a period of maybe three to five years, after the first year, you would recognize a fairly significant savings. I mean, only if you're looking at it at one year, it might be a pretty small savings, but over time, once you get past that initial startup cost, it does seem, I mean, at least just looking at these numbers, and I didn't have a chance to look at the whole study, but at least looking at these numbers, it would appear to me that, that the savings would be more significant.
Yes, and, and I think part of that depended or depends on if Milbrae was able to increase the police department budget to what it was the previous year when the study actually took place and when MRG consultants took those numbers for their report. And again, if, if they did not, it would be about $300,000 to be split between the two cities and again, that's an estimate.
Okay.
Very quick, some good questions. I think, and the American speak for himself, of course. You're welcome. But there were a couple of things. Economics is one thing that we certainly looked at and the study looked at, but it was also service level that we thought was most critical as well. What's going to be provided to the residents of San Bruno? What do we have currently and do we actually gain? Or are we staying at status quo and sharing a chief? And so all of those aspects, not only cost, but definitely the service level was provided to our community. And the focus that's given to our community is what had the subcommittees believe that at this time, the savings wasn't great enough and the service level wasn't increased at all for the city of San Bruno, that that was worth venturing past that subcommittee level. And I think, as the chief indicated, because we and the city of Milbrae have already reduced staffing levels to such a degree, the initial cost hoped savings dissipated and they've even made additional ones. So that's kind of, we weighed both, service level in addition to the costs.
Right, and you know, there's no doubt that I, maybe strain might be a little, little strong of a word, but it's, it's been a lot of effort, especially on the part of the chief, to make this happen over this last period of time when he's served both cities. And so it's not just a monetary savings. I think, you know, it's important that we realize troops on the street is what we're really after and after we looked at it closely, it didn't really look like, you know, going forward, it was, it was really going to happen. And that was, that was the basis for our recommendation. Anything else? Okay. Thank you very much, chief. Item 10C, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to award and execute a contract for the construction of the Crestmore Glenview Neighborhood Phase 1 sewer improvements to the lowest qualified bidder in an amount not to exceed $175,000. Also, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract for the design of Crestmore Glenview Neighborhood Phase 1 Water System improvements with West Yoast Associates in the amount of $79,000.
Honorable mayor, council members, good evening. I have Harry Burroughs with me tonight also to, he is the project manager for this project and he will help me and help you to have the answer for your question. Could you go to the next slide? Reconstruction, reconstruction of the infrastructure in the Crestmore neighborhood is taking place in four different phases. Phase 1 is, is shown on the map in red, 2 in blue, 3 in pink, and 4 with green color. Phase 1 includes the surface restoration work at the explosion site, temporary safety improvement to be able to open the area for public access, and advanced sewer and water work is the subject of your action tonight. The advance, the advance work for sewer includes upsizing the sewer main between two lots on Clermont Drive. The main needs to be upsized to meet the demand. This work will be, would be desirable to complete this work before the reconstruction on those lots will start. It is the expectation that building permits will be issued in the upcoming month. The work also includes removal of a manhole close to the canyon. To minimize weather-related construction complication, it is critical to perform this work before the rainy season will begin. To meet the timing of the home rebuilding schedule and to minimize construction during the rainy season, I am requesting to authorize the city manager to award and execute a contract for the construction of this work to the lowest qualified bidder not to exceed $175,000. This is a deviation from our usual process, but with shorter the overall construction process with two or three weeks. The water line improvement in this first phase will help to increase the water system pressure in the rebuild area. This is important as the new homes being constructed are subject to the new building code that require residents to have fire sprinklers. Our recommendation is to expedite this work to allow, to allow for the improvement to occur in advance of the whole infrastructure reconstruction for the area. This work will include a new water connection, how is shown on the map. A water connection from the existing water main on Sneed at Clermont East and upsizing the, the existing connection at Clermont West and Earl and also installing two pressure regulating station at both locations. The design of this work requires specialized expertise. West Yoast Associates are currently working on our water system Western plan and are the best positioned to perform this work. After designed, the work will be advertised for bid and it is our intent to come back for your action to award the bid. The state disaster reimbursement process, the city's insurance and/or the city's trust fund will cover the cost of this contract and the construction. This will conclude my presentation and I will stand and Harry also for your questions.
Any questions of Clara on these two ends?
Through the chair?
I was hoping we could get a little clarification on the, on the certainty that the funding mechanisms that are identified here would be appropriate for these repairs because in the report, I didn't think it was compelling that these things were necessarily changes that were required because of the fire versus improvements that we would have made otherwise. So I don't know, maybe the city manager and the city attorney could, could probably address that question a little better since it's a technical question, is just a little background in terms of how we, how we'll present this to guarantee that the funding mechanisms will be appropriate.
Right. The, some of the issues associated with what our insurance through the AB Plan Corp will pay for, some of that analysis is actually very complicated and the need for rebuild of the neighborhood is, is fairly urgent and time sensitive. So we are, the language that you see in the staff report is, is language that you're going to continue to see because we will probably need to unravel some of these issues going forward as, in a, in a very deliberate and detailed manner. Specifically on this project and the work that the director has presented to you tonight and, and generally stated having to do with how trust funds will be used for the rebuild of the neighborhood. It is our expectation and our intent to take a broad-based view of what needs to be done in this neighborhood in order to assure that the neighborhood is situated to recover and rebuild. In this particular case, both of these projects, in at least staff's opinion, do fit into the definition of what needs to be done in order to rebuild. Now, it is correct that if, if you're looking at this from the perspective of were these were, was the infrastructure specifically damaged in these locations and are we digging up a damaged pipe and replacing it? The answer to that very precisely is no, not, not in these two particular projects that we're talking about tonight. However, it is necessary to do both of them in order to facilitate and to support the rebuild of the neighborhood. Specifically, the sewer pipe that is located between those, between the two properties, as the director outlined, is in a location that was very difficult to access when the, when sewer improvements were made during the previous several years in the, in the, in this drainage basin. And it is necessary and desirable that work occur now before new homes are built in this area while we have the opportunity to access and make sure that that sewer line is adequate to cover the necessary, to accommodate and carry the necessary sewer flows from, from this neighborhood. In the second instance where the work to be performed includes water system facilities along Sneed Lane, the, the work in that location is intended to accommodate and to provide the necessary water service for homes that are being constructed at both a larger size as well as with the new building code requirements for fire sprinklers. In order to accommodate the flows, the water flow- In order to accommodate the flows, the water flows that will be necessary to service those properties and to assure an adequate fire flow in that neighborhood, this work needs to be done. So, these are, this in particular is an example of the type of work that you'll be hearing from us further, needs to be done in order to facilitate and accommodate rebuild of the neighborhood beyond that which really goes to fixing pieces of infrastructure that were directly damaged by either the explosion or the fire. As I said before, there is a wide variety of different types, there's many different types of work that are going to need to be done. And in some cases, the detailed analysis about whether our insurance will cover pieces of the work will need to potentially trail the work in order to make sure that we stay on schedule. And honestly, the intent and purpose, or among the intents and purposes of the trust fund, was to make sure that the city was not damaged financially, in making sure that we're able to do what needs to be done in order to make it possible for people to rebuild their homes and return to the neighborhood.
Mr. Zaffarano, anything to add?
Sure. Only that I think that the, if the expenses that are set forth in this report are incurred by the city and not otherwise reimbursed or insured through the city's insurance company, they would be eligible to reimbursement from the trust. I think they're clearly the kinds of expenses covered in the very broad language of the trust.
Okay, thank you. And relating to something the city manager said, my understanding of the sprinkler requirement in new construction was that that was intended to offset the situation that's created by having low flows in neighborhoods. So, meaning the hydrants couldn't produce enough water, so we put the sprinklers in as a backup or to augment that. Now, it sounds like I'm hearing that the sprinklers are actually creating a bigger demand on the existing water flows.
Not new construction.
It is, it is my understanding that the standard apply for any new reconstruction irregardless of the water flow, of the existing pressure.
Mm-hmm.
The code requirement for any new construction.
Karen.
Correct. So, the new code adoption, we've been applying it within Samatay County for a while now for additions to existing buildings or new buildings. And that's basically anytime you have a new building, a new single-family home, it has to be sprinkled. Now, the addition portion is what you were referring to. In the past, we've had a policy that if you're in a low-flow area and you add a sizable addition onto your home, you also have to sprinkler that in order to make up for the low flow of the nearby hydrants. But in this case, it's applied universally in California now, that all new homes have to have sprinklers.
Okay. And my concern was that if, I understand that larger home would probably consume more water, but if we're also saying that the addition of sprinklers introduces an additional demand on the system, and we're requiring those in neighborhoods that have low flow, are we making that condition worse by requiring sprinklers?
That's a good question. I don't believe so, but that's something that I would have to ask, you know, a plan check engineer or someone who actually can do those calculations. I think it depends on, you know, the time of day and the number of different variables, but that's something we could find out the answer to and get back to you.
I think just to go back to your-
Sprinklers don't go off and on as much as toilets.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, it's a peak demand.
Just to go back to your previous question, regardless of whether, how the system works, if we're, the code requires us to do that, and if in order to accommodate being able to provide the flow service, whether, what the existing conditions were becomes a little bit irrelevant when you're rebuilding a neighborhood with so many, so many homes, as is the situation here. And that is the reason that we view this as being very clearly necessitated by and related to, but for the situation not being required.
Agreed. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions, Ken?
Yeah, I'd like to expound on a little more, because I'm totally in favor of upgrading this area, in any area that we can. And I brought up the similar question of the vice mayor in the study session, is that are we capable of paying for this through the trust or through insurance? My concern is that we're, we have the fortunate, we're fortunate that there's capacity on Sneed Lane, and so you're making this connection. But eventually, you're going to redo all the mains throughout the neighborhood. So, just a technical, how are these homes that are going to have, these new homes, you know, that are probably farthest away from this new connection, how are they going to experience better flow for, you know, for their sprinklers, for their homes? And if that's, and if they can, why is it necessary to redo all the mains throughout the neighborhood?
After the implementation of this improvement at those two locations, the water pressure will experience a major improvement in the whole neighborhood. Still, after the implementation of this project, even if the water pressure will be much closer to the expected standard, will not be at the level of the expected standard. After the implementation of Phase Two and Phase Three, what, exactly what additional improvement will be necessary as part of the reconstruction of Phase Two and Phase Three, then in the whole neighborhood, the standard water pressure will be in place.
And Two and Three are expected to occur in the next year?
You are absolutely correct.
Anyone else? Okay, we do have two resolutions to adopt here. Would someone like to introduce them?
Through the chair. I would like to introduce the first resolution related to the sewer improvements.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Through the chair. I'll also introduce the second resolution related to the water system design project.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Item 10D, receive report and approve response to Samatay County Civil Grand Jury Report Running on Empty Regarding City's Availability of Financial Information, Level of Reserves and Liquidity in Retiree Pension and Healthcare Payments.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, this is one of several grand jury reports that have been generated by the Samatay County Civil Grand Jury in the 2010 grand jury work program. This item attempts to, or this grand jury investigation attempts to review on a countywide basis the status of reserve funds accumulated and maintained in each of the county's 20 cities, and to render some analysis and conclusions regarding the sufficiency of those reserves, given the current difficult economic circumstances, and in particular, the constrained fiscal condition of many, if not most, of the cities in our county and obviously elsewhere throughout the state. Overall, the report, in staff's opinion, does a good job of evaluating a number of important criteria related to the maintenance of a healthy fiscal reserve. And as you can see by scanning the report, there are some graphics in it that show very clearly that the city of San Bruno generally stacks up quite well, I would say, in comparison to other cities within our county, generally towards the middle or better in terms of both the amount of reserves that have been maintained by the city in comparison as a percentage, those reserves compared to annual general fund expenditures. This is not a foreign topic to the city council or to our staff, in that the city council has worked over a very long period of time with attention to maintaining the fiscal stability of the city organization and the general fund in particular, and has paid close attention to the need to maintain an adequate reserve consistent both with normal sort of prudent operating standards as well as recommended guidelines promulgated throughout our state. And as you can see from the report, that the grand jury and their analysis, you can see that the city of San Bruno does in fact sit well within those standards. There, as you know, the city, when the grand jury investigates a topic related to the city, we are required to review the report and to, for you to take action in a public meeting with specific responses to each of the findings and the recommendations that the report contains. We've provided a draft letter back to the grand jury, the providing justice to respond as we're required to do, and I think in general, you'll see that those responses track on what I've just said, that we view the conclusions and the findings of the grand jury in this topic to be very consistent with the city's practice and the city's policy. And in general terms, we agree with the findings that the grand jury has made. In one, there is one particular area I'd like to call out, and that is one where the city of San Bruno, there are some issues within our, both within our county, among cities, as well as among cities generally, and that is pretty wide variation in how cities are handling the requirement, requirements for reporting and then funding the unfunded liability associated with post-employment employee benefits. And in particular, the topic there is retiree healthcare. As the council knows, we have a unique structure in our city related to the medical benefits that are provided both to active employees as well as to retired employees through the Teamsters Trust. And although it's a little bit different than how most cities fund retiree medical, and there was some complexities, we have completed the actuaries, and you know from your receipt of the annual audit report that there is a significant accrued and unfunded liability for those costs. At the same time, the city is funding at least a portion of that liability through your premiums that are paid annually for each active employee, a piece of that according to the way that the Teamsters Trust operates, a piece of that employee healthcare premium is actually offsetting the cost of post-employment retiree benefits for healthcare. So, while I think we are not, we're not situated at the top of the pile in this regard, because we're not aggressively funding the OPEP liability, the city is very much, again, in the pack in terms of the way that most cities are handling this potentially very large liability. And again, I would just highlight and congratulate the city council for being fiscally prudent and for identifying the issue of reserves as being one that requires our continuing attention. And I hope you, like me, see this report highlighting that in fact, the city of San Bruno has done a responsible and good job in this area. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions? Do you have an action requested to approve the response?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item 10E, receive a report and approve response to Samatay County Civil Grand Jury Report, County Officials Need to Make Noise About Aircraft Noise.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Magda Gonzalez, and my colleague Erin is joining me today from Community Development Department to help answer a few questions. I'm here to provide some information to the city council regarding the grand jury report that the mayor just mentioned, county officials need to make noise about aircraft noise. In this report, the grand jury generally addresses three areas. The organizational structure of the San Francisco Airport Roundtable, the effectiveness of the airport roundtable to address community concerns regarding aircraft noise, and the type and location of airport noise measuring and tracking equipment, and the impact on certain communities regarding this noise. The grand jury made several findings and recommendations, which you have in your packet along with the staff recommendations in terms of responses. The grand jury's recommendations regarding the organizational structure of the San Francisco Airport Roundtable include asking the county of Samatay to take a more active role in revitalizing the airport roundtable. There's also a recommendation to modify the roundtable bylaws so that it would require the chair and the vice chair be elected officials from the participating Samatay County communities, recommending city representatives regularly attend and fully participate in the roundtable meetings and activities. And as you know, in San Bruno, our representative is Councilmember Ibera, who has been attending the meetings regularly and has been participating actively in the roundtable activities. The grand jury recommendations regarding the aircraft noise, including, include asking city councils to direct their county, their city representative on the airport roundtable to request that the airport noise abatement office deploy equipment to measure and track the intensity of structural vibration on departure flight patterns, to increase the focus of single-event noise violations and frequency, especially with night departures rather than the average that is being used now, and to adopt a fly quiet program to include sanctions as well as reward-based regarding single-event violations, particularly with night departures. I'd also like to mention that recently, a resident of San Bruno came to City Hall to share his concerns regarding the aircraft noise that he's experiencing in his home. He was specifically concerned with the nighttime departures of cargo jets. He indicated that these jets cause higher, cause greater, cause higher than normal takeoff noise. He's in agreement with the grand jury recommendation on single-event noise measurement versus the averaging that's currently used now. So, tonight I ask that the city council approve the responses, the draft responses that we have provided, and I'm here to answer any questions, happy to answer any questions as well, as I said, Erin can help with that as well.
Any questions? Ken?
Now, through the chair, I'd like to commend Magda for, you know, for answering these questions and working closely with me as to addressing these issues. As a, as the city representative for the last six years and the alternate for the previous eight years, I have to say that the roundtable members took this report very seriously, and they weren't too pleased with it. So, at the meeting last Wednesday, I'd like to report to you that the roundtable will, although they are not required to respond, they will respond, and many of the findings are inaccurate, and so they'll be addressing those. But we will be addressing a lot of the recommendations, and in many cases, they may be, turn out to be valid recommendations. So, I think we've addressed them, and I think, at least on our part, the city, we can probably be a little more diligent in letting the public know that there is a roundtable, and that there is representation, and that we can, there are meetings for them to, you know, to voice their concerns. We do have our unofficial watchdog, and that's, I'm sure she's watching, is Rose Erbach. And so she's been involved with the roundtables from the very beginning for 30 years. So, I know that if there is a concern, that Rose will call me on it. So, I think we're, you know, we're well on our way to addressing a lot of their concerns. And so I thank you for just, I do have a couple of things that we might want to change, and that would be, I think, response to recommendation 2-1 and 2-3. and 2-3. I don't think they, I don't think they require a, a mention of the state of California unless you, unless you have a different opinion, but just to, just to say that we will, you know, actively be in the discussion of a recommendation.
Agreed.
Other than that, well done. Thank you.
Any other questions? Irene?
I do, thank you. Whoever can answer this, on the response, on page 130, it says, response to finding number two, it says, the, that the weighting of the event noise, the community noise equivalent level calculation is the gold standard, and it says that they average and they weigh the, weigh the noise and all that. Why is that? Let me, let me rephrase that. I understand why it is, but is it, is that what it should be? Because it is the single noise events that disturb the people the most. You can be working all day long and not notice 15 airplanes going overhead, but at 2:00 in the morning, they wake you up, and it's the one big cargo plane, or it's the one, you know, plane going to Hawaii, or whatever it is. And maybe there should be more emphasis given to that kind of event, or, you know, measured in some other way.
Good question. I mean, the, I believe the non-technical question, answer to that is that, you know, in the existence of, of residential areas and communities in relation to an airport, the FAA has recognized that, you know, they needed to come up with some gold standard on gauging the noise, and it's been that gold standard that has provided the, the noise insulation in many of our communities. I believe that's the reason why the, this roundtable, and it's in cooperation with San Francisco Airport, implemented the fly-quiet, because we do know each of those single events. We can pinpoint what time, what airline, and the, and the decibels, you know, that it had. And that's why we, you know, we communicate, we get the airport to communicate with those airlines and with those pilots.
Okay.
We don't have the power to, you know, to find them. We don't have the power to tell them, you know, it has to be a cooperative. And I believe that, you know, the fly-quiet program has, you know, has worked. But we, you know, that is the reason why the, the roundtable is still very valuable, is because there are still ongoing issues with, you know, various airlines, and one of the largest airlines in the world, airports in the world. So, we still need to, you know, communicate and cooperate with the airport and with the, with the airlines.
Okay. I, I have one more then. And then on the next one, it talks about that the, I realize the roundtable, I mean, the grand jury says that San Mateo can and can house the authority to impose fines, and then the response to it that says they do not, that it's reserved for the federal government. So, so how would a resident go about getting the roundtable, or whoever would be the mechanism to impose a fine? Has, and do we know if fines have ever been imposed?
No. It's my understanding that fines have never been imposed. I will tell you that whenever there is a, a resident calls the airport, they are forwarded to the noise abatement office, and they are, if, if the, if there is an ongoing issue as far as noise, then they, they place the temporary monitor at the residence, at the property, and then provide, you know, provide a report, and then the report gets forwarded to, you know, to me or to the city, to the planning department, I believe. They even, they send a, they send a report. Unfortunately, it is all within the guidelines, you know, what, when, you know, when the, at least in my experience, when a resident reports unusual, you know, levels. So, in answer to your question, if they were to pursue it, I don't know. And it hasn't come to, you know, hasn't come to the roundtable as far as someone wanting to pursue a fine.
Okay. Well, it would be interesting to-
So, I mean, that, that is something that, you know, we will be discussing.
Okay. Thank you.
I will say, you know, while they're discussing, I will say that there is, I mean, there are open meetings, and as much as we went to quarterly meetings, because there wasn't a lot of business when we made that decision, we do reserve the right to call more meetings. So, and I believe we will be calling more meetings to discuss these, you know, these grand jury issues.
Okay.
Anything else? Action?
I'll make a motion to, with the minor corrections that I proposed to, to forward the report.
Motion second on the floor, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item 11, report of commissions, boards, and committees, there are no reports this evening. Item 12, comments from council members. I would just like to say that we've had two very, very special events this last week, and they, they went off very, very well, nothing but good comments from the people. Friday night was very solemn and deserved to be, and Sunday was, was good camaraderie, great to meet everybody, to talk, and just to kind of relax a little bit. And we did have a subcommittee, Michael and I sat on it, but most of the work, of course, was done by staff, and was done by the residents affected in this Glenview, Crestmore-Glenview area. So, I want to thank them and all of the Glenview residents. And I will single out Randy Schwartz and Tammy Yuki for doing an extraordinary job planning this, this last weekend, Friday through, through Sunday. It was just great, and it couldn't have, it couldn't have, you couldn't have done a better job. Thank you very much.
You're here. Mr. Mayor, if I could also add another stat.
Yes.
I just wanted to mention that Rich Mao of the, founder and CEO of CSG Consultants passed away in August, and he'll be having the memorial at Coma Community Center on Thursday, the 15th. For those that don't know, CSG has been a big part of this, this county and this community, especially in San Bruno. And personally knew Rick and, and a lot of his staff, and really nice guy, and I, it's just a, it's, it's a big loss for, for the company and for the community.
Rico?
Through the chair. And, Mr. Mayor, you already made a comment about the staff. I wanted to say also that someone who sits up here who was a former city employee of San Bruno understands that not only do you show up to work, but understand that there's a lot of dedication and love that goes behind that, and that's why folks are here and they do the job they do. And what occurred last year and subsequently up until this last weekend, staff, I believe, has shown their dedication and their support to the community, to the residents, to the Crestmore area. And I personally realize and believe that it is thanks to you folks that assisted this town in moving forward and being together once again a year later. And staff did a great job at the events. It was a hard thing to plan, both just logistically and maybe even a little emotionally. But I think, once again, the staff and the community came together, and I think, once again, we all can be proud. And I find that all those that serve in uniform, those that aren't in uniform, there's no ineptness here. It's a quality staff that showed their dedication and their love to this community.
Thank you. All right. Item 13, we do have a closed session this evening, and that is to confer with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation, one case, California Government Code Section 5495, 4.9A. And having said that, we won't have any reportable action to, to talk about. So, we will adjourn to the next regular city council meeting, to be held right here at the Senior Center, September 27, 2011, 7:00.